Good evening, we're gonna go ahead and get this regular city council meeting started. If you would all rise for the invocation this evening that will be led by Pastor Will Finn from the Sebastian United Methodist Church. I don't see Mr. Finn, so just all rise for a moment of silence and then remain standing for the pledge which will be led by Vice Mayor Kitchen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Mayor Hill.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Here.
Councilmember Dodd.
Here.
Councilmember Avino.
Here.
And Councilmember McPartland has asked for an excused absence tonight.
All right, great, this time item four, item five roll, agenda modifications, are there any modifications from council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to add an item to the agenda, make it item 12-F, just for a title purpose, let's call it canal vegetation removal. That would be under new business, final item, under new business.
Titled what?
Canal vegetation removal.
Real quick question on that, then, if there's any discussion on Roundup or glyphosate or any herbicides to be used.
That should move to that item.
They would be used, okay.
Yeah, so from public input, any discussion about that should move to that agenda item.
I have no objections, anyone else have objections to that?
No.
All right, here, none.
7B resolution. Oh, well, I'm gonna do that when consent resolutions come up.
So, we've added, for the public's knowledge, we've added an item, item 12-F. The title of that item will be canal vegetation removal. Any discussion on glyphosate, Roundup, or any herbicides that we would use for the removal of vegetation in our canals will be taken under that item. Thank you. And that leads us now into, anything else, council?
None.
None, great, item six, proclamations. How's it going, guys? Great to see you up here. Sturdy group of men. At this point, I have a national, a proclamation for National Volunteer Week, which will be April 7th through the 13th of 2019. Whereas throughout our history, our nation has been profoundly shaped by ordinary Americans who have volunteered their time and energy to help their fellow man. And here in our beautiful city, people come together daily to give of their time, effort, and compassion to make this a better place and to create a better life for others. Whereas volunteer service is a lifelong pursuit that strengthens all of us, and with every act, our communities are drawn closer and our country is forged stronger by the generous spirit of volunteers. And whereas today, along with our gratitude to the many volunteers in our community who give unselfishly of their time, we also pay tribute to our city hall and police department volunteers who have contributed thousands of hours of their time to make our city operate smoothly and to keep citizens safe from harm. We are all richer for their presence. Now therefore, I, Jim Hill, Mayor of the City of Sebastian, do hereby proclaim April 7th through April 13th, 2019, as National Volunteer Week, and urge everyone to observe this week by volunteering and pledging to make service a part of our daily lives and to express our gratitude to those who give every day. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, on behalf of the volunteers, we appreciate this. We do this job because we like what we do. Thank you.
Anyone else wanna go? All right, great, guys, thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Coming out of that dark room into the sunshine. All right, I have a proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April 14th through the 20th, 2019. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information transmitted from citizens who telephone the Sebastian 911 Communication Center. And whereas the public safety dispatchers of the Sebastian Police Department have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job. Now therefore, I, Jim Hill, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the Mayor of the City of Sebastian, do hereby proclaim the week of April 14th through the 20th, 2019, to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Sebastian, in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe.
On behalf of all of the dispatchers, we would like to say thank you.
All right, thank you very much, thank you so much for what you do. What a tough job, right, I mean, what a tough job, transmitting that critical information to our men and women on the ground, and boy, what a good job they do. Thank you. Kerry Bokas?
How you doing?
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
I have a proclamation for Guardian at Light of Month, April 2019. Whereas the City of Sebastian, excuse me, I need to drink a water. Whereas the City of Sebastian prides itself on giving back to the community, contributing to the equality of life among our citizens, and whereas the Guardian at Light of Month program speaks to the best interests of abused, abandoned, and neglected children who are involved in the court system, and whereas more than 190 children in our community suffer from some form of abuse or neglect each year. Whereas Sebastian community members are encouraged to join together throughout the month of April to raise awareness for those children that have fallen victim to abuse, neglect, or abandonment. Whereas this effort will be, whereas this effort will give abused, neglected, and abandoned children in our community an improved chance for a safe, permanent home and a positive future. Now therefore, I, Jim Hill, Mayor of the City of Sebastian, do hereby proclaim April 2019 as Guardian at Light of Month in the City of Sebastian, and urge all citizens to give of their time to make a difference in the lives of most vulnerable children by volunteering with the Guardian at Light of Month program.
Honorable Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, honorable council members, member of the public, we would like to thank you, on behalf of the 19th Circuit Florida Guardian at Light of Month program, we would like to thank the generous and dedicated members of the City of Sebastian for participating in our program. We have many, many people from the City of Sebastian that volunteer as guardians at Light of Month for our program. Of course, there will always be need for more. We are grateful to you, we love this city, I love this town, thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Again, these things make me very proud to be the Mayor of the City of Sebastian. We had the wonderful volunteers who are out there helping and protecting the citizens every day. We have our fantastic dispatchers and our police officers, and then the wonderful work of the Guardian at Light of Month program. You know, what a pleasure it is to be able to provide you with these proclamations, and thank you all so much for the work you do.
Tonight's announcements, we have a chamber concert in Riverview Park this Friday. It will be the Sebastian River High School Jazz Ensemble and Steel Drum Band. That's a very good concert, starts at 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. And then on April 20th is our annual Easter Egg Hunt. At 9 o'clock, the Easter Bunny and the Hayride will start, and at 10 o'clock, the Easter Egg Hunt will start promptly, so hope to see you all there.
Announcements from council? All right, that'll move us to the consent agenda, item seven.
Okay, poll item 7B, please.
Yes, sir, item 7B, anything else from council? What's your pleasure?
I move approval of 7A, 7C through 7L.
Second.
Motion to second, roll call please.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember Avino?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Councilmember Dodd, resolution R-1909.
Thank you, I pulled 7B, not because I have an issue with it, but 7B is a proclamation from the city council to various state legislators asking that they support House Bill 219, which is a House bill related to reducing human trafficking in the state of Florida. I thought it was important to bring this out and let people know that we're doing this, and also provide an opportunity for anyone in the city who thinks that they're interested in trying to reduce human trafficking, that they contact their state representatives and tell them that House Bill 219 is very important to the state of Florida. So given that, I move approval of 7B.
Roll call please.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember Avino?
Absolutely.
Mayor Hill?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
All right, thank you, leads us to item eight, committee reports and appointments. We have an appointment to make this evening, 8A, National Resources Board. We have, if I'm not mistaken, one person who's applied for the position to expire 7/1/22?
Correct.
All right, thank you. I would nominate Donna Ware to serve that position.
Mayor?
Yes.
We have two alternates on the committee now, and one of those, Charles Mogo, if I'm saying his last name correctly, has been an alternate for about a year. Could we move him to the permanent position and invite Donna, and appoint Donna Ware to the alternate position?
I would certainly be glad to do that, as long as he's wanting to be moved into the position.
He, his attendance is not, I have to check on it.
No, then, I'll second your original motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, any other nominations? All right, thank you, Ms. Ware. We appreciate your service and look forward to having you on the National Resources Board. There are no public hearings this evening, and there is no unfinished business, that leads us to item 11, public input. Is there anyone here from the public who wishes to speak on any item that is not currently on the agenda? Now, we'll remind everyone that we have added an agenda item, number, what is it, 12-F, where we'll be discussing the removal of vegetation from our canal system, so any discussion on Roundup, herbicides, or anything that would be, have to do with that, I will wait until item 12-F for discussion. Anyone wish to speak? Yes, sir.
Yes, good evening, my name is Rick Lewis. I'm coming forward today, some of you may have gotten an email from me, I have also spoken to the city manager and your facilities director. I'm here to talk about wreaths across America. For those who don't know what wreaths across America is, it is a, it is an organization that was begun as the Arlington Wreath Project back in the 90s, and was put out through about 2007 to the rest of the nation. And what it does is put wreaths on the graves of those who served to remember and honor them over the Christmas holidays. This year, we'll be putting them out on December 14th, and we will have a ceremony at noon to honor, to coincide with the one at Arlington National Cemetery. Last year, myself, Joe, and Sue Crowley brought this into Indian River County for the first time by sponsoring Cresslon Cemetery and Veterans Memorial Island in Vero Beach. We raised over 900 wreaths to place out there, and our full intention was to spread this out through the rest of Indian River County. So our next, our intention is to start this, spread it this year, bring it into Sebastian, with your approval, of course. I have sent a packet to the facilities manager with an approval sheet, and as soon as he has time, hopefully I can go over that and fill out an event request so that we can do this. But I will need the approval of this council and the City of Sebastian to continue on and to bring that program to Sebastian.
Okay, great, yeah, I'm sure the city manager will work with you moving forward and, when appropriate, bring whatever required documents to us for approval.
Okay, and just so you know, I have spoken and am working with American Legion Post 189 for their assistance. I'm a member of Post 39 in Vero, I do now live in Sebastian, so that was the reason for bringing it here. So, if you have any questions for me at this time on what this would require from the City of Sebastian, I'd be glad to answer them.
Yeah, I'm real comfortable that Mr. Carlyle can work with you to come up with whatever it is we need to provide you, or whatever you need to provide us in moving it forward, and I'm sure he'll be able to bring us forward something for approval.
Yeah, and really, there's really nothing for the city to supply except you're okay for us to do it.
Great.
We, as coordinator, would be responsible for putting the wreaths out, picking them up, and ensuring everything is cleaned up afterwards.
That's outstanding, thank you very much, appreciate you. Anyone else wish to speak this evening? All right, seeing none, we will move on to new business, item 12A, design-build public facilities compound. Mr. Carlyle.
Mr. Mayor, this project has been, one that has been talked about for some time. We're moving this forward, we put out a design-build RFQ, request for qualifications. We did receive seven very qualified firms, the selection team narrowed it down to the top three, and we asked them to come back to the city council and do a brief 10-minute presentation to you all, and a brief question and answer, and then you would, at the end, under AA, would select the top three and authorize myself and the city manager to negotiate a contract to bring back to you all for approval. One of the things we asked in fairness, and again, it's a public meeting, is that the teams would go upstairs, Mr. Baker will escort them up there, so that it gives the presenter openness to talk about what they feel is best and not have to be concerned of that information being shared with the other proposers. So, at this time, if you would accept a proposer one, if they would go upstairs, and all your team members, if that would be, that would be, thank you.
All right, thank you very much for doing this, that's, that's great, good idea.
And so, yes, and so first, the first presenter will be Aaron's Companies, followed by Wright Construction and W&amp;J Construction, and I believe they've all submitted PowerPoints or presentations to you all for them to go over that should come up on your screens.
All right, very good. Sir, how are you?
Good, thank you. Hopefully I can speak into this.
Indeed you can.
One moment, please. There's a short, brief thing, but our contents are brief history, core values, our team accolades, followed by portfolio focus, testimony of Simmer Plark Projects, conceptual plan for building A, building B, and building C, and why choose Aaron's? About us, our company was founded in 1802 in West Palm Beach, we're 144 years young, I'm not, but needless to say, we are proud of our continuing family tradition, and we spanned over many decades, and we look forward to hopefully being successful this evening. Our core values are, we focus on relentless effort, teamwork, tried and true methods. We don't, we anticipate challenges and we try to come up with good solutions. Our design team is, our design-build team is myself, Fernando Zabala is an in-house architect, we perform all our architectural and engineering services in-house, we do not use an outside architectural firm. We have President Rob Marinello with Mesco Building Solutions, they were the building supplier on Hangar C that we constructed, and we have Aaron Bowles from MBV Engineering, who we've worked with previously, and they've also done work for the City of Sebastian. Some of the accolades, I think you can read for yourself, we've been the top building award winners for Mesco Building Solutions since 2015, and we're in the top five in 2018. We're not supposed to know that, but we do. We're, I'm a University of Florida graduate, and we were so honored to be one of the top 50 fastest-growing businesses that have a Florida alumni. We've had excellence in design awards, as you can see, there's an innovative fire station, that was the first of many projects that we've done for the City of Palm Beach Gardens. Now, what's coming up is, we did, we designed and built Hangar A, Hangar B, Hangar C was designed by somebody else originally, we were the low bidder because it was over budget, and we had a wonderful time with Joe and his staff in re-engineering it and bringing it back in to your budget. So we've had a successful conclusion, and we have a nice letter from Joe Griffin when he was the airport director before he became the city manager. Palm Beach Gardens Service Center operation, similar to what you're doing, except a little bit larger. It's very creative, you can probably see some of the background on it. We've taken a lot of the core information that you'll see later on in our presentation and actually implemented that into our presentation. This is warehouse distribution building that we designed and built for the FPL Group, that's in Miami. Truck wash facility, that's one of your criteria that's on your design. We designed and have constructed three truck wash facilities of high tech for Florida Power and Light, in order to spread them to be able to maintain and get a longer life out of their equipment. Into our conceptual plan, building A, you can see as they're rendering, you asked for six offices, we actually have more offices, and you'll see that coming up, we attempted to put all, most of the offices around the exterior so they had natural light. There's a couple of interesting features, a large conference room, we created a conference room off the 4A, as we did with Palm Beach Gardens, so that staff can have a meeting without people transferring into the inner core of your public works facility. And as you can see, the brown is the office area for your maintenance side, most of those offices have windows viewing into the facility. We did flip something on you, you had the repair facility up against the office space, we flipped and put the woodwork there, after having done a year's worth of research with Palm Beach Gardens, we found that the woodworks, they ended up switching it to, the woodworks was better to be there, and that's a little bit more of the noise further back. As you'll see on the next slide, we created a, there's a gray area, so we put, where we put there is your compressor and your new and used oil containment, and over the top of that is a small mezzanine area, since we have to enclose those areas, and we learned that from doing our Palm Beach Gardens project. This is a roof plan, you'll see a little cutout, that cutout is where we put the emergency generator, we have discharge from the generator, we didn't want it bouncing off the bottom of roof panels and stuff, so we left it open air. You'll see skylights, we've positioned skylights already. These are some of the preliminary elevations, we've located the doors, we've located air vents, exhaust fans have already been put into our designs. We have Rob Marinella here, he's representative of Mesco, we've actually already done the structural design for the building you see, the main building. Building B is your warehouse facility, and it's broken into the categories that you had asked for. As you can see, we've detailed a massive amount of the plans already. Once again, you'll see the roof plan, you'll see natural skylights for light inside your warehouse facility. These are some architectural elevations. Once again, you'll see the low vents are air intake, the higher vents are discharge because you want to pull the air across the body, because the body perspires and it creates like an air conditioning effect. Once again, we've already done preliminary structural designs. Building C is the, is your truck wash facility, which is a reproduction of the ones that we've done for Florida Power and Light. You can see cross-sections, elevations. Once again, we've got the structural drawings, which Mesco has provided us all the structures for Florida Power and Light. This is a wastewater recycling facility that we're using at FPL, we're also in the process of finishing a new facility for Michael Jordan, his private golf course, and we have a cart equipment washing facility there, we're using the same technique and technology there. Why choose Aaron's, you can kind of read what we say, but having had our experience, where cost, we used, you know, cost design proposals, we have a legacy going back to 1902. We pursue having, using local subcontractors as we did on Hangar A, Hangar B, and Hangar C, as long as they meet our qualifications for insurance, and obviously, as long as they're competitive in the cost, because we're looking out for the city. There's three reasons, we have a sense of community, I think I just hit on that, about using local vendors and subcontractors when possible. Our experience, we're 117 years young, we have an abundance of experience working on projects, as you can see, very similar, and actually, the public works facility of the City of Palm Beach Gardens has given us a lot of knowledge in doing our preliminary proposals to you guys. At Light of, sorry. Another important thing is, a pre-adjourned building is like an erector set, and we do not subcontract out the erection of the pre-adjourned building. We didn't on Hangar A, we didn't on Hangar B, we didn't Hangar C, we're not doing it for Palm Beach Gardens, so we have a crew of 25 to 30 guys that are actively doing our building erection sequence for us in-house. We've continued our relationships, we've continued within our team, we've worked with a bunch of the members, the engineer that's present, Mesco that's present, we've had long-term relationships, also the mechanical, electrical engineers, we've had the same thing. We like to keep the team together because the team is, can create effective and cost-conscious designs, and they don't, they're not afraid to take direction, so, and it's all done in-house, like Fernando's are in-house architects, so there's not a lot of drag time as far as communications and working with Paul and his team. With that, I'm open for questions.
Well, I just have one, you know, I'll defer to our professional staff as to the qualifications, whether or not you're qualified. I don't believe there would be anyone here that wasn't, whether the qualifications.
My 10 minutes.
Yeah, there you go, so you nailed it. And whether or not, you know, the facility that you'd be providing would be sufficient for the growth of the community over the next couple of decades. First, let me say that I'm very happy this is happening, I've been trying to get this done for over a decade, I think. It's been a long time that I've been fighting to see the moving of this facility to its new location, but I want to be careful when we make, when we choose this location, we've chosen it, but one of the things that I think is important to me, when we're, when we're gonna make the final decision on what building goes in there, is the actual aesthetics of the building. Now, we have an industrial building that's gonna be going in there, its purpose is to house and repair the equipment necessary for the public works department, but we also have land surrounding that that we're gonna be marketing to other industrial types, so it's important for me that the facility is appealing and look good for those who will be driving down, what is it, Airport Drive West, or is it just whichever roads it is, and it will also be right on Roseland Boulevard, and I know the residents of Roseland will be very curious to make sure that we provide the necessary buffer in there. So I guess, you know, with me knowing that all of the contractors are suitable, or we wouldn't be looking at you.
Yes, sir.
Just know, just with that in mind, your building, looking at your building, it looks like a shop, and that's what it's supposed to be. What would it take to make that building more appealing, just, and I'm simply talking this side?
That's funny, because when we went to the pre-bid meeting, we were told to make sure that it stayed cost, as cost-effective as possible, because otherwise, we would have created some more interesting designs, and I'll let Fernando, actually, our architect, he can address.
Good afternoon, Fernando Zabala, I'm a licensed architect in Southern Florida, the design director of this team, and it is very simple, your question has a very simple answer, which is that we will design a building that is true and honest. true and honest to its function, but at the same time addresses all the circumstances that you just mentioned. Again, as Richard mentioned in the pre-qualifications meetings, it was very emphatic, the direction on proposing your building that was extremely austere. There's a lot of things that we can do with the building and keep it within price to make it look more palatable and more compatible with the area. Also, we can integrate elements in this building that will be part of what you just proposed, which we are not familiar with, as the other intents for, you know, neighbor developments or buildings that you believe are going to be building in the same area. So if you, if you see, and I think it's on the screen, this is an image of the Palm Beach Gardens Separation Center. This is a metal building. All of the panels are insulated panels. And with a couple of tweaks that we added to this building, the building looks incredibly singular and it's very appropriate for the location. What we did was we, and we can show you more than what we show you on the screen now, but it was just a couple of touches, some paint that allowed this building to become a singular element.
And that's the reason for my question. Certainly, you know, I wouldn't want to add a great deal of expense to the facility. That's not, that's not what, what I'm here for, for sure. But, you know, aesthetically, I know, I've, I've built these buildings or had them built. There are things that can be done quite easy to, and inexpensively to make them more appealing than it just looking like a maintenance facility.
Absolutely.
Right now, our maintenance facility is in a, is in really a commercial area that I think could be a very beautiful area and it's basically hidden by a fence. So Mike, what I want to make sure is that we don't get to 10 years down the road and have to put a fence up around it to hide it from our neighbors. So, and I know it can be done quite easily. I just wanted to get that answer from you.
I believe that the majority of the, the front of the office space faces the street you're basically talking about. So if you go back to our rendering, it's very easy to incorporate the elements that Fernando spoke about at a very cost-effective way. It's just by upscale and doing scales. I mean, we were even told, don't put a canopy on the front and we put a canopy over the front and we put them over the exit doors because that's the right thing to do. But that, that front elevation can easily be enhanced, very easily and very cost-effective, by the way.
Okay, great. Any other questions from other council members?
I just make a comment. I agree with you on, on that. I think as, as part of the overall design phase, when you met, step through the next phase, we certainly need to deal with trying to make it aesthetic enough that we're not ashamed of it. And it, it isn't a great cost to do that. You don't, you don't have to go to anything else to do that, but I agree with that.
Trying to bring up the fire station that we did for Palm Beach Gardens, which you'll see that. We did the same thing. That's actually a pre-adjourned building. In fact, Palm Beach County is now copying our Palm Beach Gardens facility because it's attractive and cost-effective.
Great.
So, you can, we can integrate those elements and I've worked with, I've worked with the staff here on Hangar C, doing the same exact thing that where we had to tweak stuff and move it around in order to maintain the budget. And we can do the same thing with working with Paul and his team as long as, and we can identify early on because we're all in-house, as I said. So I don't have to go talk to somebody else. I just grab this guy. And we go in the conference room, we actually put that, those rendered, that elevation up on the screen and we start monkeying with it, as they say, to create a little more curb appeal as to what you're talking about. The balance of the building is, you're not really seeing, it's further back. I do understand, you may have to do the same thing on the one end of the warehouse because you see that elevation also, but you probably would mimic the elevation elements that you picked on the maintenance building as, and mimic it on the one end of the warehouse building so that it has uniformity to it.
Okay, I do have one question.
Go ahead.
Okay. I didn't notice anything in your proposal about LEED certification on a building. Are you intending to have it LEED certified?
Yeah, we, well, we're not, it, it wasn't requested in the, in your documents. LEED certification. We're doing a project in Coral Springs that's, we had, in order to move the building 25 feet closer, instead of a 50-foot setback to a 25-foot setback, we are, we are able to meet silver LEEDs, very cost-effective. The certification side of it is difficult, but we present our forms that show that we're meeting the LEEDs.
Well, yeah, I mean, you have to begin that during construction, so you have to anticipate you're going to do that.
The easy, the funny part is, is, you know, bicycle racks and showers, which you have. I mean, then you get into the, how you recapture water internally. And obviously, pre-adjourned buildings are 80% recycled, so you're getting a bonus there if you're within 500-mile radius, which the supply, our supplying on the pre-adjourned buildings is within 500, so we get bonus points there. It all goes back to landscaping. If it's, is it a low water use system? Is it, in Coral Springs, we're using a drip system on the irrigation.
Yeah, it's just that I, it should be a requirement that we build a LEED certified building in the city.
Yeah, it's, it's not a, it's, it's, the certification part, physically going out and getting the certification, that's the part, but we can demonstrate through our engineers that we have the points. It's the certificate, if you want a certified certification, it's probably $10,000 or $15,000 more.
Okay, well, there's no, you have to build it that way, though. You have to have your subcontractors have to do, have to provide LEED certi, LEED certified components and so forth.
Yeah, we've done, actually Palm Beach Gardens is LEED certified and so is the fire station.
Council member, Yvina.
I'm looking at the, these louvered or bifold doors, if you will, or actually it's one door on the fire station.
Yes.
I know that my own personal experience, I actually work in a fire station and we have issues with rolled, rolled-up bay doors. Do you know if that type of door is scaled down for the smaller bay that you proposed? If it's possible to use those versus the rolled up doors?
That's possible, but let me just give you an example of the cost, right? There's three doors on that side and there's three doors in the back. $250,000 for those six doors.
I like the roller kind of doors.
I mean, we just have, I have some experience.
That's right.
I know the numbers.
Anything else, councilman?
No, for the record, though, the front of the building faces Airport Drive West and the rear of the building faces Rosen Road and there is a huge buffer on Rosen Road that is required. So they're not going to see too much of the aesthetics that you're talking about.
Yeah, on the back side.
We will, but the people driving down Rosen Road won't.
I think, I think the preliminary site plan you gave us shows that big buffer in the back, actually.
Is there anything else you'd like to add?
We just want to do another project.
All right. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you, guys.
All right.
While they're leaving, I've asked Mr. Baker to bring down the next proposer, which would be Wright Construction. I do apologize for the delay. It's just trying to make sure that they're going to have time to give their presentation before we brought the next proposer down in, in the interest of fairness.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Please.
All right. I'm Scotty Ockin with Wright Construction. Very excited to be here. This is Brian Lee with BSW. John Blum with Carter Associates and Fred Edman, President of Wright Construction. Wright Construction, just a little bit about our background. Established in 1946, we've been in South Florida for 37 years. We have a zero change order philosophy. We'll get into a little bit of that in a minute. We have a long-term experienced staff. I've been there 19 years. You'll walk through our office and find a lot of people been there 15 plus all the way to 30 years. We're one of the few construction managers that actually has a true building and a civil division. We do a lot of DOT work, South Florida Water Management, you know, we do a lot, heavy civil, which we share experience with them and send them plans and share information. Experienced environmentally sensitive sites and especially experienced in airports. I mean, we're doing a maintenance building and expansion at RSW right now, five foot off the airside, similar to this job. We're doing a project in La Belle Airport and we're doing a project Sarasota and Punta Gorda. We just finished a job up in Punta Gorda, a building and a civil job.
A little bit about BSW. I'm Brian Lee. I've been with BSW for over 15, sorry. I've been with BSW for over 15 years. We are one of the largest firms headquartered in Southwest Florida with a total staff of over 20. I'm out of our Fort Myers office. We have 15 and we also have a satellite office in Naples. We have a 30-plus year track record in Southwest Florida and we have over a 30-year relationship with Wright Construction. And as a testament to our service, we have over a 90% repeat client rate.
Team experience, Brian just touched on it. We have a 30-year relationship with this design-build team. We've done 15 design-build projects with this team, actual design-build projects. Since 2015, we've done six and we're doing five with this exact team right now. And we have a local civil engineer in John. Schedule, I noticed in the RFQ, you had about a two-year timeline. We put together the schedule from permitting to finish. We figure we can, if we break ground by the end of the year, we think we can get it done in less than a year. We actually put together a full schedule on this project from start to finish, from award to end. We figured in the permits, working with John on the permitting, the local permitting times, and we figured in the, this is just the first sheet. You have the full schedule in your original book. Again, this is a key staff member chart. You guys have this in your book as well. And again, this, this exact team has been here, been together on, for 30 years and on 15 design-build jobs.
Want to discuss a little bit of our methodology and how we approach projects. The three kind of core basis, bases of how we work is listening, innovation, and performance. We feel that as we begin a project, as we begin any of the meetings, the listening is the most important part. That'll basically set the tone for how the remainder of the project is going to be. It's really understanding what the owner's priorities are going to be on the project. Again, it's something we're designing, but it's your project. We want to make sure we understand what the success looks like for this project and going into it, knowing what any of the disruptors could be to potentially, you know, be detrimental to that, to the success of that project. We feel that we like to spend most of the time up front in meetings, making sure we've got the program correct, making sure we, we have everything that you want to be in the project, in that project. And that's why we like to spend a lot of time up front, making sure we have everything in there. That's why we feel that that's the most important and as it sets the tone. Innovation, it's not just about being innovation on how we design it. It's, you know, being innovative and creative, how we address potential problems that could arise. Innovating the process, you know, how we deliver on an untidy project, how we make sure that all of the items that you're looking to get into the project, how we, how we can make that work. And leveraging our, leveraging our technology. The way we work, the process we work with, we use building information, information modeling. As you can see from some of the renderings that we've done here, we model everything from the ground up. And it's not just something we do as the architect. We require it of our mechanical and structural engineer. What this allows us to do is a lot of in-house coordination on the front end rather than things that could be potential issues in construction. And this is something that we, not just as a design team, we leverage this with Wright also, which allows them to do material takeoffs directly from the model. And performance, it's going that extra mile. Respecting what your priorities are and not what our priorities are, that is key. And again, going back to the listening, it's making sure we execute on what we heard at the beginning of this process and make sure we deliver you the project they're expecting and then applying innovation to all that we do.
Design options. Let Brian talk a little bit about this. We actually have the overlay of the exist, the original plan with, with our proposed plan.
And as we looked at the existing plan, it's one of those things to where the plan worked, but it's always looking at how we could improve on that. We feel that rather than having two separate, you know, warehouse buildings, if we could connect both buildings into being attached to the admin office building, it would make it more efficient. What it allows us to do is have public parking up front and also a potential private parking up at the front also. You still get the wraparound driving for the, you know, the fueling stations and the can-wash areas in the back. But we feel that, you know, looking at the design, looking at the site, still staying away from the, the wetlands that are on site, we can make this work and make it a more efficient building when looking at something like this.
A little bit more secure also, single-foot entry. This is exactly like a project we did a few years back for Collier County Fleet Facility and they, they love it. They love the design, the function. It's, it was almost identical project with the wash bay and the fueling stations as well. And this is the elevations of the building. I'll let Brian talk about that a little bit, but we're a Varco-prudent dealer, which means we have direct pricing with the manufacturer. It also means we can share design information in real time, so we're not sending them drawings, waiting on something. We're, we're uploading drawings and sharing CAD files with Brian directly.
And to that point, even though it is a metal building, there are different things and different design options we can look at to, you know, make the building more aesthetically pleasing, you know, rather than just, just going with the typical, you know, vertical, horizontal, or vertical panels. If you can look at something, just maybe turning the panels horizontal, you know, that changes the look, you know, looking at different colors, how we look at the roofs. But there's a lot of different things we can look at within the design as far as, you know, how we can make that, again, a more aesthetically pleasing building because this will be, you know, an office building, a place people do have to work in.
Cost control. Again, our zero contractor initiated change order philosophy. Top Wright's Glades County Training Center, we had a state grant, $5 million. We had to work with the design team to design around that. That was it, not a penny more. Bottom right is the FGCU Emerging Technologies Building. What we did is talk about this a little bit. We brought the subcontractors all in a room with the design team and we were able to cut $2 million out of the design without cutting the size down. We do preliminary budgets. We're going to, we're going to do our best. We're going to maximize local participation. We're going to do detailed bid scopes. We're going to break out bid scopes so multiple bidders can bid. And we're also going to incorporate value engineering alternates and adds and deducts into the original bid scope. So therefore, if you have money down the road that we saved, you can just pull those off the shelf and they won't cost you more down the road for design or, you know, you put it out for a change order, it's always going to be more later. Quality control. Brian talked a little bit about building information modeling. This is my team at the clubhouse at Shell Point a couple of years ago, sitting around, looking at this. We took all the CAD files, combined them with the architecture CAD and we're, we're looking for floor drains, plumbing, mechanical, we're, we're creating, that's part of our zero changeless philosophy. We're, so no issues are in the field down the road. And we do a rolling deficiency list every week. We do a, we don't like to call it punch, but every week we do a list and we make sure it's done. We don't count on you to do our list, our punch list. And we, every time a new job hits the ground, like a drywall guy, metal, metal framing, mechanical, electrical plumbing, we have a pre-installation meeting. We go through the scope, we go through the drawings to make sure there's no, go through the schedule, make sure there's no miscommunication and the submittals, make sure they're installing all the right products. Why Wright Construction? Zero change order philosophy. What that means is we like to give money back. And if you have money back and if you have value savings, you can do more on the project. More of your wish list items will generate a wish list throughout the job. Zero punchless philosophy. What that means is you're going to have a sustainable, long-term design for the long term, low-maintenance facility. We, we look at that 50 years down the road. And experienced design-build team. I mean, John's 100-year-old company, we're 80, BSW. 30 plus. 30-plus, and together, our design-build team with the exception of John, I mean, we've done, that we have a 30-year relationship. And we have five currently ongoing design-build projects with the same team. I mean, it makes sense, again, and a local civil engineer. With that, any other questions?
All right, very good. I appreciate you guys coming down here. The, one of the most important things for me is that obviously this thing come in under, under budget or at budget, and, and I like the zero change order philosophy. One of the things also that I find important is the aesthetics of the building itself. We are building a, an industrial building whose purpose is to, to house and repair equipment necessary to maintain the city. So it has a very industrial use, however, and it's in an industrial location, however, the aesthetics is very important to me as I believe that moving forward, there will be properties along Airport Drive West that we will be trying to market to other industrial, for other industrial uses and, and hopefully will require those facilities to be aesthetically pleasing as well. I think you've added some of that into your design, and, and I appreciate that. So if there, if, so that being said, if there were any design elements that, that maybe I, that maybe needed to be tweaked in order to provide a more aesthetically pleasing building, if I'm looking at your plan, the, the actual office building itself is pleasing to the eye. And you can't see the bay doors that are on the building to the, if I'm looking at it to the, to its left. Now, would I, I would just assume that that's just a structural building, right? It's just bay, bay doors?
Correct.
Just looks like a garage?
Yep, correct.
And that will be visible from, from Airport Drive West? So, so that, so the, the turning of that building may cause challenges in the overall aesthetics of it. So with that in mind, you know, you say you do a lot up front, the challenges that you would have in making that type of a building, a garage, look appealing?
To that point, if you look on your screen, the Glades Warehouse Facility is kind of almost the same design. If you see toward the back, that tall masonry wall that we use back there, on the backside of that is a metal warehouse building.
30,000 square.
So what we did there is we, you know, because the, that road fronts State Road 27.
78, 27.
Yeah, 27, State Road 27 there. So that's why, as we front that, we use the more architectural-looking material, split-face masonry there, as it fronts that road, so we could, you know, look at the same type of ideas there where we know we're going to get frontage, looking at changing the material, but on the back end still having the industrial look building.
And you made the right choice with the design build, because we can get together as a team early on and not wait till the plans are done and then it's over budget, you know, putting all those aesthetics in. We can put add alternates, we could do a split-face wainscote, there's all kinds of things we can do aestheticly, aesthetic-wise.
Okay, and then, and then the only, the only other question I have is that you'll be, you'll, if you were to, to, to get awarded this, you will be hiring contractors, subcontractors coming in to do much of the work. I would assume that much of that would be hopefully hired out of local contractors? Is that what the plan is with them?
That is correct.
And then, we would assume also, and I guess that's more in the form of a question that a representative from Wright would always be on the facility, whether it was a subcontractor doing the work?
Correct.
Or?
Yeah, if there was a subcontractor on the site doing work, a member of Wright Construction's team would be on site. There would never be a time that anybody would be working on site without Wright Construction's supervision.
Outstanding. Thank you very much. I have nothing further. Mr. Mayor.
Can you pull up the layout again? I just wanted to make a few comments. The, there you go. So from speaking of several standpoints, I like the one-way-in, come in off of Airport West, and the way that, I, I just like the flow of this to begin with, all the way around. I love the fact that you guys have the parking up front, you have private parking in back, and the fact that you actually made the building like one whole unit, it, it just seems very functional to me. Conceptually, I like the front of the building as well, but this layout function-wise is, is amazing, with you guys still maintaining, that retention ponds on either side of that?
Yes, correct. Yeah, and that top, that, that top right corner there, you know, making sure we don't do anything with that wetland, so we don't have to do any type of mitigation there.
I, I just think the design is great. I mean, and the functionality is, is, well.
And the other thing, the other thing too to remember is, this is without sitting down and, and meeting with you, with your team, to make sure we understand what's important to you. So we saw the preliminary concept as it was presented to us in the RFQ, we came up with what could be one alternative, but then when we sit down with the city and understand what your priorities are, even this could change dramatically or come up with something completely new to make sure that we're actually addressing what's most important to you, to your staff.
And you know, Mr. Mayor, I think that that's important, that these guys are looking at what we want versus, you know, and, and anybody that's ever dealt with contractors over the years, a lot of times you hire a contractor and it's like, oh, you don't need this, oh, you don't need that, oh, you don't want that, or I can't do this, or I can't do that. And I haven't heard any of that from you guys at all. It seems to be all about the city, which is, as well, it should be. I mean, if we're paying you to come do something, it should be, well, you know, what do you want and what do you need? I like the one-year start-to-finish, the zero-change order, which is gigantic, and I know that, that might not be realistic, but that's what you strive for. I've owned, owned five houses over the years, and punch-out lists are a huge pain. And you guys have a zero-punch-out-list philosophy, I, I love that. And then, like I said, the functionality is, I, I like the layout and everything, so appreciate it.
Thank you.
I see lockers and restrooms, but I don't see any showers. Are there showers in both the men's and women's lockers?
Yes, they are.
Okay, they're just not denoted on here?
Yeah, just not to that level of detail, but we would have space for there for showers for both locations.
Okay, thank you.
I was going to add.
Just one thing, you're, you're anticipating a LEED-certified building, correct?
We were not anticipating that.
Okay. I think that, that should be part of the discussion during design phase. I personally don't think we should build a building in the city that's not LEED-certified.
Okay, well, now, with the new building code, for the most part, most buildings that do come out have to kind of meet the LEED minimum standards anyway. But if that's something we want to strive for, that's definitely the conversation we need to have, and what level of LEED you'd be looking to meet.
Right, okay, that's all, thank you.
All right. I'm a, I'm a LEED AP, I'm multiple LEED projects. That emerging technology building with FGCU that we showed you earlier, that was a LEED job, so we're fully capable. And that's all, that's always good to know that on the front end, so you can do your specs that way and your design and set up your whole program.
Anything further, gentlemen? I very much appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thanks, ma'am.
Copy that.
And so we've asked for the next app, the next proposer to come down, as they're leaving their rooms, so I've already let Mr. Mayor know.
Okay, well, one quick question before they get here.
Sure.
Twice I heard about a one-year schedule. We don't have budgeted dollars to do this in one year. It, it's basically a 19, 20, 20, 21 budgeted cycle for this.
So, we didn't put a timeline on to have it done in a year. We've told them in the, in the bid proposal that it's a phased project as funding becomes available.
Okay.
And so they know that, but they may have first phase done in a year, but that was not a requirement in the RFQ that they complete the project in a year.
Yeah. I just want to make sure that if, if it can be done in one year and we can figure out how to finance it, that's great, but we have to make sure that it flows through the financial stream as well.
I, I agree. I want to see this thing open. I've been sitting here for 10 years trying to see this building.
I'd love to see it done in a year. Can we finance it and do it?
Well, let's see what, let's see what we do with the design and, and once we choose a contractor and see what our, what the real guaranteed maximum price will be.
Good answer. Mr. Carlyle.
Thank you.
I gotta see those guys are really put together, though. I, sorry.
I'm certainly glad to see the gender-specific lockers and restrooms, because right now they have one universal.
We can't just be quiet. So, Mr. Mayor, the next presenter will be W&amp;J Construction, and I'm sure their PowerPoint is up.
All right. How are we doing this evening?
Good evening.
Great, go ahead and give us your presentation if you would, please.
Thank you for having us.
Pleasure.
Good evening. My name is Eric Costin. I'm the Vice President and Owner of W&amp;J Construction. I want to say thank you for short listening us for the design-build project for the city of Sebastian. I'm here with my team tonight, here with Rob Hembrek from AVCON, who has a tremendous amount of experience at the Sebastian Airport, John Zwick, who has a long history, he's our project architect, has a long municipal his, municipal history both in Indian River County and in Brevard County, and Aaron Bowles with MBV Engineering, who has an office here in Vero Beach, in, in Indian River County in Vero Beach, and has an extensive history of design work in Indian River County. Seems like that you, you have selected three really good firms to come present to you tonight, and I really wanted to get into why you would select our team versus the others. Our geographic proximity is that we are the closest. We do have a lot of experience in Brevard County and in Indian River County. We have staff, we have employees, we have superintendents, we have engineering folks and lots of subcontractors and people that we do business with in Indian River County and Southern Brevard County. W&amp;J Construction is a 50-year-old construction firm, and we've, about 70% of our business is municipal work. So we're very experienced on the design-build approach, working with cities, and knowing that it's our responsibility to provide you with the lowest cost and the lowest GMP possible. One, the factors that are going to help us with that are the simplicity of the design. John will walk you through that once I get through here. Our local construction knowledge, we've done a lot of work in Indian River County. We are doing two projects right now for Indian River County. The, we were awarded the courthouse renovation, and we are doing the new tax collectors facility on US-1. So we have a lot of people in the area, and those were competitive projects, so that can give credibility to the fact that we look at everything with a competitive nature. We have people in the area, subcontractors, our superintendents, nobody has to be relocated or moved here. Our Chief Financial Officer of our company for 14 years lives in Sebastian, so we'll have a lot of executive oversight in this area. And why that's important for this project is, is that you'll be able to have someone from our team dealing with any type of issue within a matter of minutes. And I think that that's pretty important when you're doing a project of this size and this magnitude. Our superintendent that we're, that we proposed for this project, he lives in Vero Beach and can be at the job site very quickly should any problems arise. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to John Zwick to talk about our design.
Thanks, Eric. As Eric indicated, my name is John Zwick. I'm an architect with Architects RZK, the President of the Firm, 32-year-old firm in Brevard County. We brought along a plan of the site plan, just to familiarize yourself with the project. There are two buildings, Building A and Building B. Building A is the administrative building and the maintenance shop, and Building B is basically the storage building. For the next slide. We did a rendering of the project to give you an idea of the concept, to show you what the building looks like. The emphasis was on simple design, economical design, so, and we talked about a pre-engineered metal building, so that's what we're looking at here is a pre-engineered metal building. I think where the band is underneath the roof area, that dark color, that is not shade, that is actually just another panel color that we put in there to try and give the building some excitement, some appearance, change the appearance over a typical metal building. And we, we decided to go with the columns out at the, the maintenance area for the large overhang that they wanted to cover the vehicles with, and, because that's going to be more economical, of course. So the next slide. This is the administrative area of the building A, and that's the, the most design that we did. So I took some liberty with this design because, as it indicated in the RFQ, we're really going to get in to discuss a lot about the design when we, when we formulate it. But I think first and foremost, in the center area of the design, you see there's a large note there in, in lighter color. That is actually extra square footage over what was shown on the, on the site plan. So we really do need to get into this building and massage it to cut out some square footage and to give you what you need, because there's plenty of offices. The built, the perimeter is surrounded by offices, trying to give everybody a window. On the left-hand side at the front where you enter the lobby, the big buzzwords these days now are security. So we developed a very secure lobby, lockable doors, you can have card readers on them if you like. Even the secretarial area there, you'll notice that there's a little escape door that goes into the classroom area. Should somebody come in, an irate person trying to do something with the facility, she can escape the facility and they're, they're basically stuck in the lobby, all they can do is leave. Other, other parts of the design is we tried to split apart some restroom areas so that you would have restrooms there for the staff and for the classrooms and for the lounge, and then you have restrooms and showers for the maintenance staff, and those are all on the far right-hand side. Basically, that is the simplicity of the design as far as we could take it with what we knew. We have another building that we showed, but there's very little shown. You can go to the next slide. That's just the, the bottom one is the Building A, the top one is Building B, and that's really for storage. So they're both shown at the square footages that were identified in the RFQ. And I think, is there another slide? There's not. That concludes the 10-minute presentation that we were advised to give, and we're open for questions.
Let the mic's on before I get in trouble. Let me start that over again. Thank you guys very much for coming here. We appreciate having you here, and congratulations for being here. One of the things that's important for me on this property, I'm very excited about the moving of this building because its current, its current location is, in my opinion, a terrible one for it, and we're going to be moving it to where will be a great one, freeing up the other location. This is an industrial building on an industrial property, but we have a lot of properties surrounding where this building's going to go that's currently vacant, and we're going to be marketing that for other industrial properties. So it's important for me that the building be aesthetically pleasing. And it see, it, it shows that you guys have some of that concept in, in, in your initial You know, as we, as we go forward, you know, currently we have a fence that hides our facility, and I want to make sure that we build something that doesn't. So you're, you're getting it some with the, the color changes in the building. With that being said, what are your thoughts on potentially doing things that could, could create a more visually appealing building for that area?
Well, I think probably we could look at, other than the, the pre-engineered metal building siding, we could come up with some kind of a siding, we could come up with some overhangs, we could come up with a more prominent entry feature. Just those simple things alone wouldn't be very expensive. Would certainly add to the appearance of the building.
Yeah, facade is okay, and that's, and that's what I'm, you know, just like, it's simple things like that.
Yeah.
Would, would lend itself, even in, in some landscaping improvements and something like that.
Of course, yes.
I have nothing further. Captain of God, any other questions? All right, anything to summarize?
Yeah. Our team has completed many, many projects together, so I, I feel that we can really streamline this process and get it going quickly. There's no learning curve with our team. We've been, we all have probably 20-year-plus relationships, and the, our kind of main focus is delivering you a, a very aesthetically pleasing building, but at a, a very competitive local market cost. And I think that that's what our team can do.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate you. Mr. Carlyle.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of council, at this point we'd ask you to consider ranking the, the three firms, one, two, and three, and then, and once you take a vote on your one, two, and three, then we can, then you could direct us as staff to, to negotiate a final design and contract and guarantee maximum price that would then be brought back to you for approval. And so at this point, it would be up to council, we have very, three very good And so at this point, it would be up to council. We have three very good firms. They've all put on...
Do you want to invite the other firms back if they're staying in?
I don't know if they're here.
They're all out in the lobby.
Invite them in. And so we'll, you know, we ask that you rank the different firms, and then, again, we have three great firms that have been giving presentations. I think we have a tough decision, and with that, I'll turn it over back over to council for your deliberation.
Okay, I just have one question for you. You're comfortable with any of these three firms and the direction that any of these three firms has gone relative to the design of the facility. My guess is that we provided them with a sort of a, this is kind of what we're thinking about layout, and then they came back with these things, and you're comfortable with any of the three that are currently set before?
I am comfortable with any of the three companies. Our selection team went through all of those seven proposers. All seven proposers put together some very good packages. There were just little intricacies from these different three builders and design teams that we thought rose them above the top. And so now, it's the tough part is to try to find the one that is ranked number one, and number two, and number three.
Right, and that's our job, and that's fine. We can do the tough work. Council, I'll say that I was very impressed with all of the packages that were presented to us. They're very thorough. All of the companies did a fantastic job, and I believe providing us the information that we asked them to provide. I was very satisfied with the answers to the questions that we gave them. I believe that there's one, I believe, that stands out a little bit, and I think that's Wright Construction Group, and I would recommend that we choose Wright Construction as our number one on the list. Anything else from the council?
Go ahead.
Okay, you want them ranked 1, 2, and 3, right?
1, 2, and 3.
Okay, so can we each just give him 1, 2, and 3? Would that be the way to do it?
Okay, I will go 1 Wright, 2 Aaron's, and then 3 WNJ.
Do it though.
Councilmember Avino?
Was that a motion?
Well, I will make a motion to the effect that...
Are we going to have a discussion, or are we just going to rank them, I guess?
You're open, but we're going to give directions, so...
I'm going to let the vice mayor go, and then I'll go last.
Oh, I like Wright's as well as Aaron's. I think their designs were great, all three of them, actually. I could go either way, you know. I like the setups on the property itself. And I like the interior setups for the offices and the layouts.
Well, that being said, I'll just make a motion that we provide the city manager with our list in order of Wright Construction as 1, Aaron's Companies at 2, and then WNJ Construction at 3. And then, Mr. Avino, did you have more to add, sir?
No, I picked Wright, WNJ, and then Aaron's, and I agree with you with Wright. I think they stepped way out of the box. They kind of changed things around a little bit, and they're very just pro what we want and how we want it. I just want to say thank you to everybody that actually showed up here and did this presentation. I know that this is, I happen to have family members that are, do this kind of stuff, and I know this is a lot of time and a lot of work for you guys to put this together, and I just want to say I appreciate everybody for being here, so.
At this time, I'm going to ask for public input. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this issue? Are seeing no, seeing none. Anything further from council, staff?
No, I appreciate council's time, and I do appreciate all the work that these very qualified teams have put together to move this forward. And as we go through the negotiation process, if you vote positively for this, as we work through it, we'll bring something back to you, hopefully, in the next few months.
Great, thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Avino?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
All right, thank you. And again, thank you very much for your time. And that will take us, council, to item 12B. Mr. Carlyle.
Mr. Mayor, we had put out a proposal on, I think, three different occasions to get an as-needed concrete bid, and we received two proposals this time from Santa Cruz Construction and Timrose Contracting. We're asking this time that council consider doing a dual award for this, for the two proposers. They both have different pricing structures based on what's needed, and they also would give us the opportunity if one was in a position where they could not beat the timeline, we could go to the second proposer, so it would allow us some flexibility as staff. So we would ask, again, that city council consider awarding both to Santa Cruz Construction and Timrose Contracting, and then authorize us to negotiate a contract or finalize the agreement with them, and the mayor to be able to sign it.
Okay, great. Council, what's your pleasure on item B?
I move approval.
Second. Anyone from the public who should speak on item 12B? Roll call, please.
Mayor Hill?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember Avino?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 12C, Mr. Carlyle.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we were approached by two or three companies, and it seems to be something that's pretty prevalent in government now, is looking at some of the billing. And I've known in previous positions where a phone company would, all of a sudden, charges would start showing up on there, and then you're dealing with them to get them reduced, and it's a lot of staff time and aggravation. This Eric Ryan had given us, a corporation had given us a proposal, if everything they save us, they get 20% of those cost savings, and any of the other savings, we get to keep. And so in talking with Collier County, they've seen some pretty significant savings in taxes they probably shouldn't have paid and some additional charges, so they monitor all of our bills, and then they'll come to us with recommendations. They won't make any changes to our billing. We'll have to make those changes, but they'll give us a recommendation. So they may recommend that we make some change that may be advantageous for us, but we have the full control. But it gives us another layer of assurance that our tax dollars are going to be spent appropriately, and that we're not getting a charge in one month that shows up. It may take four months to get rid of it. They're going to be ones to monitor that constantly.
Okay, great. And the cost to the city, if they don't save us money?
Zero.
All right. Council, what's your pleasure? Item 12C.
Move approval. Second.
I think anyone from the public who should speak on this item? All right, any questions from council? Roll call, please.
Mayor Hill?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember Avino?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Was there someone from the public that wished to speak that I missed? Did I miss something on that?
On the contract?
No, yeah, that one we just did. Oh, okay, okay.
I don't think there was.
Okay. Item 12D, consider lien reduction and disposition of fine. Mr. Carlyle.
Mr. Mayor, this property located on US-1 is the former bait shop, and there is a proprietor that's wishing to go in there, which is AT&amp;T. And part of that proposal is they're going to have to put up a bond to demolish that building. But there's been significant fines that have accumulated on this property over time. One of them is up to $386,000, and it was for a sign that was not, did not meet the code. The property owner tore the sign off of the stand, but didn't remove the stand, and the fines continue to occur. And then there were some other, you know, where we had to go in and do some cleanup. So there's a couple breakdowns in there. We did not actually have a complete breakdown of what our actual costs were for the $386,000. Our estimate is $3,500. And then you have, excuse me a minute, you have, I didn't bring that page. The breakdown is about $2,470, $47.64, and additional $3,500 in our actual costs, plus the $25,000 bond to ensure that they demolished that building. And we'd ask, you know, the city council to look at that, reducing those fines, and I'll let the city attorney weigh in, but our feeling is if we went to a court of competent jurisdiction, they would probably say the $386,000 may be a little bit erroneous. But I think our goal is, one, to get compliance, to get the blight away, and to get the land on the tax roll, and a business that will provide a service for the citizens of Sebastian, and also some tax base and jobs. So with that, I'll turn it over to council for questions.
Yeah, let me just say, there's no doubt that's a blight, and that building has been an eyesore sitting there for years. Is that property currently in compliance?
There's some landscaping and some, you know, it's dilapidated. And so in the spirit of the code, there's probably some minor things that need to be done, some landscape cleaning and cutting and that, and, you know, we don't have a code for aesthetics when it comes to paint on a building, and we don't want to get into HOA-type code enforcement.
No, we certainly don't. But the building itself, there's no real future use for that building on that property. I mean, I guess I'll ask Ms. Bosworth if there's a possibility of a renovation of that facility versus the demolishing of it.
So I know there's, on the second level, there's actually, there was an apartment building. There was one business, the owner, as he mentioned in his letter, he had come in at one time, and this is where the whole sign issue came. There ended up being four businesses in there.
Right.
There was a restaurant, there was a bait shop. But in terms of, I think, the most cost if you use the existing building is what would you need to pay to bring it up to current building codes?
Right.
The building itself, besides the outside aesthetics, would have to be improved. But I think your most, your main cost is going to bring it back up to building standard building code currently, if somebody was to take that building. But there's currently a contract on the property. It's going to be demolished. I think it's probably the best financial...
Yeah, and I'm so, I believe firmly that, you know, punishment is not the goal of code enforcement. You know, I believe that very strongly, you know, but for me, this building is, you know, has been ignored for so long. And now the idea is to come in and sell it, ask for forgiveness, and then just simply walk away. And so I don't think that it's possible that we should ask them to pay almost $400,000 in order to sell the property. I don't even know what the property's worth, but I'll defer to council as to how they want to go forward with this. But, you know, for me, you know, we've got, what, $2,500, $3,000 bucks into this as far as city expenses?
About 59.
5900.
We couldn't get an accurate count, because current staff wasn't involved with the special magistrate, the actual hearing back in 2007, so there was some staff time with that. There's been some current code enforcement that, of course, working with the developer and through the contractor's agreement. We apologize, we could have hourly and gotten a better estimate, but considering the time from 2007 and current time.
Is, I mean, is it appropriate to speak with the applicant or whoever it is that's...
Mr. Worthington?
Mr. Worthington, sorry, could not make it tonight. I believe that he does have a representative, and there's a representative, Mr. Aaron Bowles, I believe, from, for AT&amp;T.
Okay.
Hello, everyone.
Good evening.
Here is a representative for my client, Walter Worthington, the current owner of 1671 US-1. We have met and had discussion of how to proceed with this, and obviously, the goal here is to get rid of that current building, which is certainly an eyesore, and move forward and do the right thing for the city. Mr. Worthington knows he's definitely made some missteps. Without going into too much detail, I think he thought he was going to be a commercial landlord, probably didn't do the right thing, has been living out of state and in different places, and that's the current status. You know what the building looks like. He does apologize for not being able to be here tonight. His goal was to be here. He's dealing with a pretty significant medical issue, and his doctor basically told him he could not make it right down from North Carolina, so he does apologize for that. My role here is basically to hopefully take your direction, and hopefully we can come to an agreement on the dollar amount and also whatever paperwork needs to get, you know, facilitated to move this along.
Okay, so the property is currently under contract. Someone's wanting to purchase this property?
Correct, yep.
And the, obviously, the contract is contingent upon all of the liens being clear?
Correct, yes. I'll, just as, obviously, you know...
Please, I'm looking to hear everything about this, because this is a lot of money, and this building's been there for a long time, and so we just need to move forward. So the more information we get, I think, the better we can serve the people of the community. Go ahead.
Sure, yes, we appreciate that, and thank you for your consideration. As you may or may not know, maybe you don't know, this site has been submitted for site plan approval for, am I allowed to talk about it, Dory? Sure, yes?
General information?
General information, okay. So yes, it has been submitted. There is a proposed retail facility there. It's in for permitting. We're almost through that process.
Is the building going away?
And the building's going away, and we have a brand-new building, it's full, you know, site plan. It's ready to go. We're just waiting on this to be resolved, and...
Right, yeah. Okay, I have no further questions.
Yeah, I had a conversation this afternoon, and I'm, I was trying to get down to how much the actual, how much the city actually had involved in this, and it seems to be kind of difficult for us to come up with a dollar amount for a lot of reasons. But what I think I heard Mr. Carlyle say a minute ago was it's about $6,000 with the combination of the two numbers, and I know that there's probably costs that aren't involved in that because there's other things. So, and I love the fact we're going to get rid of that building and put a brand-new building in there, and AT&amp;T's going to be a great resident in the city. So I would make a motion that we reduce the total lien amount on all liens on this property at $10,000, and that we, for a payment of $10,000, that we release all liens that the city has against this property.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, before you, can I just make a comment? Just for the council's note, they did pay the $24.4764. It has been paid.
Okay, then the $10,000 minus the $24.67 that they paid, so the amount of the new payment would be the difference between the two, then?
And the property is current on all taxes.
Yes.
Well, I believe as the developers' agreement is set up, there's a space where we would put in that figure of $10,000, and then remind us that, the amount that they have paid already. So is that, that would be the figure that you would place into that developer agreement? Is the $10,000?
Our liens are against the property as it's currently owned, so I think we need to free those liens up against the current ownership of the property, which means that that payment would come from them, would it not? I have to ask the city attorney that question. So...
Mr. Stokes? Paying attention, sir?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
The question was to face this, okay? Dory was saying that there's a place in the purchase agreement between the new...
No, not the purchase agreement, the developer agreement.
The developer agreement, okay. So what I'm saying is that if we allow settling all of the outstanding liens for an amount of $10,000 minus what they've already paid against lien amounts, that that should be paid by the current owner. We release the liens, then the property transfer takes place. Is that the proper approach for us?
Yes, basically. There is in the developer agreement, if you look, there was, there's a bonding requirement, because we were concerned that if we released it for a discounted amount and then the building never did get demolished and the project never did move forward, we would be out.
I'm not proposing we change that, because I agree with that. We shouldn't, we shouldn't release it and then have AT&amp;T say, oh, well, we don't want to do this. Now we're stuck with the building, and we have to demolish it.
Right.
So I don't propose changing that at all. What I'm saying is that the current owner of the building would pay us the difference between $10,000 and what they've already paid against liens, and then we would release the liens.
Correct. We would release the liens, which would then, you know, facilitate the sale, because, you know, they're not going to be able to buy it with that lien.
Totally separate. I would still expect a $25,000 bond from the, as far as the development agreement, because if they choose not to demolish it, we're stuck. We can't go back and get money to do it.
Exactly. That was our concern. So yes, that, this, what your, what council's looking at now will clear the title, so there's no longer a cloud on the title, which will allow that transfer.
Okay.
Real quick, where did the $10,000 amount come from? Because didn't you just say that we, okay, aren't we $6,000 in on this, not 10?
The city manager says we're 6, but as we, as we talked and as I looked, there's lots of times, staff time, other times, that go into these things that we don't track, have not in the past tracked very well. So for me to say that we only have $6,000 in this as a city is, you know, I'm not so sure that we're not shortcutting ourselves a little bit, so my preference would be that we make the payout large enough to at least cover some of those hidden costs that we haven't tracked very well.
And the current amount, I'm sorry, the current amount owed is, under what's out there is almost $400,000.
Yeah, right. I understand that, but that's not their fault. That's the gentleman that is...
We're not talking about, we're not talking about the new owner paying this. We're talking about the current owner before he sells it. I missed that part. Thank you.
And from a code enforcement perspective, I mean, the whole purpose of the daily fine and the liens and everything is meant to be a deterrent and to encourage compliance. Property owners shouldn't be able to sit on their laurels for 10 years and then come in, because they have a buyer for the property, and just get a get-out-of-jail-free card and have the whole thing wiped out. I mean, that was, you know, one of the concerns. Flip side of the coin, as Mr. Carlyle said, is if he gets too large, the courts are going to look at it as usurious and say...
So that brings up the question, wasn't a reputable buyer looking to put something on this property that's, that does away with the blight? I would not be so generous in what I would propose on this.
So are we covering all bases by making it 10, then, I guess, is my next question?
I would say that that's a fair amount to cover, the hard costs and anything that...
Maybe lingering that we're missing. I got you. I'm just saying, I don't, as you said, I don't want to see the city lose money. We've got 6 invested in it. That makes sense to me now. Thank you.
So, previous discussion, the number that was thrown around was that we thought it would be no more than 5,000? And that's just what he knows at this point?
Well, it's 10 minus the 25 he's already paid, so it's close to 5,000.
Closest, better than 10?
A lot better than 400,000.
Right.
Yeah, I can assure you, it won't be less than what we've got into it. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, any further discussion by council, any questions? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember Avino?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
All right, thank you. It'll be Resolution R-19-05. Mr. Stokes, wake up.
I'm with you, sir. A resolution of the City of Sebastian, Indian River County, Florida, adopting a revised City of Sebastian Records Management Policies and Procedures Manual 2019 as the city's official records management policy, providing for future amendments by the city clerk in accordance with updated Florida records laws and non-substantive administrative practices, providing for repeal of resolutions or parts of resolutions in conflict herewith, providing for scriveness errors, and providing for an effective date.
Mr. Carlisle.
This is Ms. Williams' item, and it, I believe her goal, I don't want to speak for her, is to bring us into compliance and up to date with all of the new training and laws and ordinances that have been changed throughout the state, but I'll let Ms. Williams--
Well, why don't I ask her if that's her goal?
That is part of my goal, and the other part is it reduces the service fee to 15 minutes, which is pretty, pretty main portion of it, and it complies with the other laws for email and text messaging, so just brings everything up to date.
All right, great. Council, what's your pleasure on item?
Second.
Anyone from the public wish to speak on Resolution R-19-05? Any questions of council members to Ms. Williams? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember Avino?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you very much.
All right, just item 12F, canal vegetation removal. Councilmember Dodd, you had asked to place this on the agenda without objection, it was, you may proceed.
Thank you. Councilmembers, staff, the audience, there's been a great amount of interest expressed in how we remove the vegetation from the canal system in Sebastian. Needless to say, a great amount. And over the, over the past many weeks, I've done a lot of research, had many conversations with the city manager, and I find it, it's a dynamically polarized environment that we live in when it comes to that. There's lots of evidence on both sides of this issue about how this should be done. Currently, though, there is move underfoot in a lot of municipalities and a lot of governmental agencies to shift the direction that they have in doing this, and I think because of that, it warrants a discussion. I would like to say, though, that currently the city's working on changing the way they do some of this. We've cut down dramatically on the amount of spraying that we do. The city manager is working right now on alternative methods to do that, and what I'm, would like to do is bring this discussion out into public and to provide some formal direction from the city. I'm not going to make a motion right now, but I would love to have a motion come out of this that says something like that the council directs the city manager to provide an outline of options for removal of vegetation from the canal system and cost estimates for each, and pros and cons that allows us to then choose the appropriate method to do that. I'm not one who wants to stand up now and say that we should quit spraying herbicides. I personally firmly believe that the less chemical use there is, the better, but I can find so much evidence that says that these herbicides don't, don't cause harm, and I can find so much evidence that says that they do, and it's kind of like everything that's going on in the national public debate. People don't want to talk about the problem, they want to talk about their position on the issue. Well, let's talk about the problem. The problem right now in that canal system is not just removing weeds, it's the walls, it's, it's everything, and removing weeds is just part of it, but it's something that we need to deal with. So I open this up for debate, open this up for public input. I'm happy to see some people have stayed around. I will tell you, though, at the beginning, before you come up and talk, I do personally take, I don't know, a slight amount of issue with people coming up and talking about the council trying to kill them and spray poisons. I don't know anybody in these five chairs up here that would intend to do that, I don't know anybody that's ever been in these five chairs that would intend to do that. Let's address the problem as it resides. We have weeds in the canal, we have to deal with those weeds, and we have to deal with those palm trees, or they're going to make the wall problem worse. The wall problem is the greatest financial potential impact on the city that we have. It's more money than we've spent on anything in a long time, and if we caused that wall to collapse quicker, financially, the city's going to have a major issue to deal with. So let's talk about the problem. Problem is removing weeds, and the city has to come up with an appropriate, cost-effective manner to do that, and the best way to do that is to put together a document identifying what our options are, what the pros are, what the cons are, and what the financial impact is, and let the council make that decision, let the public debate start. So with that, I rest.
All right, thanks. I'm going to go to public input, and before we, I want to get to public input, and then we're going to have a lot of deliberation amongst us afterward.
Right, I'm not looking to deliberate, I just wanted to add one thing to Mr. Dodd's speech, is that when the public does come up, if we can ask them to speak factual, truthful information, because there tends to be--
Have you read any of the papers, or the documentation that we're going to be dealing with here?
Yeah.
I agree, I will, I will go ahead and instruct--
Well, there seems to be a spin being put on it--
Right.
--out in the community, and I, I'd just rather that people not put their spin on it, just speak what the empirical data says.
Okay, and I'm going to go ahead and instruct as to how this is going to go, because I know it's a very passionate issue. You know, we all live in the city of Sebastian, and we all have families that live in the city of Sebastian, and it would be ludicrous to think that any one of the five of us or anyone on staff would ever purposely or do anything to harm any single person in the city of Sebastian--
Exactly.
--as we are the people who live here. So I'm going to instruct prior to public input, we're going to take public input, we're going to be five minutes for anyone who wants to say anything on this issue. I am going to be very strict on the five minutes. Five minutes is what you get. Anyone from the audience that feels that they should clap or jeer or sigh or make a noise, depending on what's being said, will be removed from the building. So we can't have cheers on either side, we can't have jeers on either side, all right? We want to be respectful of everyone's viewpoint, and that's the key, because if we, if we start clapping for one side or the other, it may intimidate people to not get up and speak. Our goal here is to listen--
Agreed.
--to everything you all have to say, and at that, we will now take public input on this issue. Is there anyone here from the public who wishes to speak on this? Yes, sir.
Russell Herman.
Michael.
It's on.
It's on.
Okay.
He's just soft-spoken.
Good evening. My name is Russell Herman. I reside at 586 Redwood Court, Sebastian, Florida. I'm the vice president of the Friends of St. Sebastian River. We are very concerned about this issue, and we are ecstatic that the council recognizes we should be doing some research to make sure, as Mr. Hill said, that nobody in our city is injured by anything. So we thank you very much for doing this research, and we look forward to the outcome of the research. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this issue? Yes, ma'am.
I have to watch her five minutes.
I am.
Hi. I'm Diana Bolton, I'm a citizen of Sebastian, Florida, and I live on George Street, and I want to say, first of all, thank you very much. You guys know my background from the last month ago when I was here. I have a degree in environmental marine science, and I'm a boat captain, 100-ton master. And I appreciate the time, I want to say thank you to Vice Mayor Linda Kenshin, who I've, she was generous enough to meet with me over this glyphosate and pesticide issue, and Councilmember Ed Dodd, and City Manager Paul Carlisle, and Attorney Stokes. So I appreciate your time, and I appreciate the fact that you are listening to your constituents. Thank you. This issue is more than just about seawalls, it's about something that's on the bottom of your shoes, it's in your food, it's in your blood, it's in your urine, and it has a bioaccumulating effect. Glyphosate adds to the muck and sediment, it encourages algae blooms, it's furthering and increasing the negative health issues with both cyanobacteria and red tide, both in saltwater and freshwater. When we spray it on our public areas, what it's doing, it's killing our seagrass that we're spending millions to restore, but because it is a weed killer, it's killing our seagrass. Therefore, we have to stop the bleeding, and as we know, the seagrass is our nursery for our fish. There's been some new information that's come up since I spoke last, and I wanted to share that with you. It's time for all local and state governments and school districts to stop the use of glyphosate Roundup. Now, it's not, it shouldn't be called just Roundup, because glyphosate is in something like 700 different products under different names. The last month has seen a level of activity that supports immediate action. A second jury came in with the verdict that the herbicide caused plaintiff's non-Hodgkin's lymphoma, this time handing the manufacturer, Monsanto slash Bayer, a bill for $80 million, $5 million in compensatory damages, and $75 million in punitive damages. This is in addition, there's a federal case that has now been won, and there is a state case in California totaling just two cases, $400 million in judgments. Now, there's another 11,800 lawsuits coming down the pike. That in itself should be a reason to worry, in addition to the fact that it's unhealthy for us, it has a bioaccumulation effect, and it can contribute to 15 different illnesses. I have the supporting documentation on all this, I won't bore you with it now, I'll be happy to supply you with this information and also meet with you privately at your convenience. Scientific studies linking glyphosate to serious adverse effects still keep coming in. A recent study shows that glyphosate-based herbicides are associated with endocrine and reproductive effects. This is on top of the scientific findings by the World Health Organization that the chemical probably causes cancer. A meta-study in February 2018 concluded that there is a compelling link between exposures to glyphosate-based herbicides and increased risk of non-Hodgkin's lymphoma. What we don't want to see is our neighbors and our friends and our pets and our wildlife become sick by something that before we may have been ignorant to, but now we do have that information, and I, like I said, I can back all this up with scientific data. So I'm asking, my recommendations are that we add pesticides to our fertilizer ordinance, it's not listed, I've read through the ordinance, and it lists strictly fertilizers and not pesticides, mirroring the same caution and the same setbacks from the ditches, water bodies that we have for fertilizers. It makes sense. I would also like to recommend that we ban glyphosate and all glyphosate-containing products for the health, safety, and welfare of our citizens and our wildlife. Please sponsor this proposal to put this ban on the Sebastian City Council agenda for the next city council meeting.
Give me about 15 seconds.
I am standing ready to assist, and I'm available to provide any information and research to help assist our community.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak on this? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor Councilman. Thank you. You might not remember my name, you should remember my face, you were kind enough to appoint me to the commission, Construction Committee here at the city, and I've been a resident here for 33 years, I'm a businesswoman and a Realtor and a huge--
I'm sorry, what was your name again?
Pamela Paris.
Pamela Paris, yes.
And a huge resident advocate, I love where I live. I met Diana, I had the pleasure of meeting her at the Sebastian Properties Association, which I'm now vice president of. I care dearly about my community. February 14th, I was diagnosed with non-Hodgkin's lymphoma. I go for my second chemo this Monday. I'm not your sister, I'm not your wife, but I could be, you know, so just a little food for thought. If you'd put this on the agenda, I think the whole community would appreciate that. Thank you.
It is on the agenda, thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak on this issue?
Hi, my name's Toyn Holstra Austin, I'm a resident here, and I've only been a resident here for five years. I love this city, I love it here, and I want to say, say that I am very grateful that it's on the, this is my first time in a city council meeting, too, so I'm sure I'm going to say all the wrong words, my first time in one of these meetings.
That's okay.
What I want to say about it is that the cost of these things is not just, it is, yes, it's health, yes, it's emotional, but the, it is only a matter of time. I'm a business manager, I really understand the workings of businesses, it's only a matter of time before those, right now only Monsanto's being held to account, but if we knowingly choose to use these products that are likely causing cancer, I know that's not definitive and all of those things, but in schools and public parks and places where people are walking and being around, it is only a matter of time before the cities start to be held to account, and that is going to be horrible for us here. So that's all I want to say right now, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak on this? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Graham Cox, I live at 1213 George Street in Sebastian. I have a master's degree in economics and a PhD in ecological economics, so I hope I can lend my expertise in those things to your deliberations as you go ahead with this. We've been urging you to consider this issue for four years, and we appreciate the fact that you're having this discussion tonight. I have developed wording for a couple of types of resolution that I'd be happy to share with you if it will help the process as you do things. The example to follow, as far as I'm concerned, is the way the Fish and Wildlife Commission, even though I haven't, not agreed with the way that they've concluded, that they had a suspension on glyphosate products for a while, but they've now said that they will not make it a permanent ban or permanent suspension, but they will start looking at all the practices that they have. What they work by is a thing called Integrated Plant Management or Pest Management Plan. It defines the problem, it looks at all the environmental and economic factors, it identifies the pros and cons of all the alternatives, you select the combination of alternatives that will work, and then you ask, is this set of alternatives better than doing nothing or better than the current plan? I think it's along the lines that Councilmember Dodd has suggested here. As I said, we can provide alternative wording for either a suspension or a ban or a holding period while we consider producing an integrated pest management plan. There are several, several of our neighbors have already enacted a ban, some of them have enacted this suspension while they do the integrated pest management plan, and we can provide you information on all of those things. Again, I appreciate the fact that you guys are now considering this, and we will help as much as we can to make it work. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Good evening, my name is Mel Austin, I live on Dickens Avenue here in Sebastian. I don't have a lot to say, but, you know, I was just reading some of the excerpts from the, from the recent trial, and all, like, you know, like you guys, before you, before you turned it over to the public, disclaimed that you wouldn't do anything to harm anybody that lives in the city, and I totally get that. For me, after the fact, there were, there are a lot smarter people than probably most of us in this room who went through that trial and were both on the Monsanto side and on the Johnson side, and that is claimed to be a probable carcinogen, sounds like a whitewash, because Monsanto and the court isn't going to award $350 million, reduced to $80 million, on a, on a probability.
I live on Dickens Avenue here in Sebastian. I don't have a lot to say, but you know, I was just reading some of the excerpts from the, from the recent trial, and all like, you know, like you guys, before you, before you turned it over to the public, disclaimed that you wouldn't do anything to harm anybody that lives in this city, and I totally get that. For me, after the fact, there were, there are a lot smarter people than probably most of us in this room who went through that trial and were both on the Monsanto side and on the Johnson side. And that is claimed to be a probable carcinogen, sounds like a whitewash. Because Monsanto and the court isn't going to award $350 million, reduce to $80 million on a, on a probability. So there's something, once this is, that this is known for me, if this continues in our city and in our country, that is truly like a form of genocide. It's like, we know, we know that this is poisonous, and we're going to do it anyway because it's financially viable. Just it, in my opinion, that's wrong. That's wrong.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else from the public wish to speak?
I used to be used to do this, but I haven't done it for many years. I came up here not too long ago and told you I've worn many hats over the years.
Say your name and where you live.
Bob Hawkins from 662 Laporte Drive. I live on the canal. Retired teacher, I have a lot of different hats. I could tell you what they are, it's not important. What I'm mainly concerned about is the one hat that I always wear as a parent and as a grandfather. I have a family here, my son is here with his family, I have a grandson that's graduating this year from Sebastian, I have one that graduated two years ago. I've seen the city change, from 1970 to now. I am concerned about chemicals because of what I've been reading about this stuff and what is accumulative. I understand it's a urine test that will be very effective, and I'll take one if that's what it needs to be proven that this stuff is happening. I'm not worried about me, I'm worried about the kids. If it's accumulative, then it's happening to my grandsons that are here right now. That's why I'm concerned. And I love this city. I love the fact that you're going to take it into effect, the study is involved. But studies can go on and on and on. Make a decision, people, please. I'll be glad to take any of you out to the canal where I live and show you that it's not being effective, what you're using. And that's the canal you just invested in. I can show you a tree growing right beside me. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak on this issue?
Hi. I've been a resident here for about 20 years, and I know that there's a problem...
Ma'am, I don't mean to interrupt.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I need your name and where you're from.
My name is Mariana, Mariana Treos, and I live off of Roseland Road. And, but you know, I guess we have to find another alternative is what I'd like to do, but we don't have any alternatives. Is that the problem? Is that, that's, so that's my question. Is that the only choice we have so far, is poisoning, using that Roundup? So anyway, I'm in for finding alternatives, and I'll help in any way. I'm not sure what to do, but I'm chemically sensitive too. I have to have my house kind of dust, you know, chemical-free because I have a tendency to get asthma. So I'm really concerned, and I'm concerned for the children also that's going to be continuing to live here. All right, thank you so much for looking into this. I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak on this item?
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Kolb, and this is my beautiful daughter Sapphire, a resident of Sebastian. And I am so grateful that you are looking into this really important matter for all of residents in Sebastian and all of our beautiful creatures and wildlife. My personal story is that I've been severely chemical, chemically injured, and every day is a suffering event for me, trying to deal with all the chemicals that we have all around us every day. And I am really concerned about this Roundup and a lot of the other pesticides, because I personally cannot be around pesticides. And my daughter is also showing signs of chemical sensitivity. And while I was going outside to get some fresh air, because I am sensitive to some chemicals in here as well, I dug out of my bag, and I didn't know this was in there, a copy of my Canary Times. People like me are described as canaries in the coal mines, or the people that were in the gas mines years ago, they would take a canary in, and if the canary died, it means there was poisonous gas and they needed to take warning and remove themselves from the mines. I am one of those canaries, sad to say, and I'm concerned that my daughter may also be one of those canaries. And I beg you, I implore you to please look further into this issue and make really wise, sound decisions moving forward. I feel like this is some topic that's similar to the cigarette industry, where there was a lot of data that was kind of hidden, yet it was out there if you did enough research, that there really are grave concerns regarding the toxicity of this particular chemical. And I really do, I really do wish that you look really deeply into this, because it's not just the financial cost initially, it's a major health cost for all of us living in this beautiful city. And it is a wonderful city, and I so appreciate you, council members and mayor and vice mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. Thank you very much for having this brought up to our, to everybody's attention. If I had known you were going to do this, we could have filled this room. We have signatures of over 100 people that are interested in doing alternatives to this. I think maybe if you're going to continue to spray this, my only comment is that you really need to look at that permit again, because your last city manager said he could, he doesn't have to tell people he's poisoning their front yards and stuff, because the permit is blah, 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 blah. I really think you ought to look at the permit. The federal government says you're supposed to tell people when you're going to poison their front yard. I recently watched a toddler walking down to the waterway that was recently sprayed, and the young mother and the toddler had no idea that this place had been sprayed. And that's not right. That's just not right. You know, tell them if you're going to poison them. That's all I can do. And again, thank you very much. We have people here that can help you. We have grants that can help you. You don't need to take on this all by yourselves, and thank you again for considering it, because there's a, there's a plethora of help out there right now. The federal government wants us to clean this lagoon and talk to Duane de Vries and all the other scientists involved. This is a good step. If we could clean the St. Sebastian River, water going out, we'd be heroes. You guys could be the heroes here, and the federal money's here right now. All we got to do is talk to your neighbors here and get the federal grants in here. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on this issue? All right, seeing none. I will say that, and I'll give you a little bit of a background on who I am. I don't have a PhD in biosciences or any of those things, but I do have two degrees in environmental horticulture with a focus on soils fertility and pesticides. I've been a restricted-use pesticide applicator throughout the years. I've spent the last 30 years of my life involved with chemicals and pesticides. I understand best management practices. I understand that the label is the law. I understand the EPA and the tolerances that they allow. So I have a very, very good grasp on what we're dealing with. So just as that, counsel, as we proceed with discussion, I know that, please, that I actually do know a lot about what I'm talking about. And unfortunately, the discussion was, didn't, didn't lead very much to the removal of the grasses. You know, the thing that we have to do in the city of Sebastian, we're required, and I'm going to just throw a series of questions that Mr. Carlisle, if that's okay. We're required to keep those canals and waterways free from plants and debris.
So our St. John's Water Management Permit requires us to maintain that as part of our flood control and our permits, to keep those waterways functioning and flowing, because this vegetation accumulates. You know, Concha's got a weir structure, it can block it up. So we are obligated by our permit and obligated by our water control to manage those waterways to make sure that they're functioning as they were designed.
Okay, so we have to keep the grasses and the debris out of those, those waterways. And, and you know, really, it is a public service that we're doing it, because if we get a major storm, those canals help the community by relieving us of the water and taking the water and eliminating a lot of the potential flood.
Correct.
They also act as staging areas to clean the water before it's released into the St. Sebastian River.
That's correct. That's why it's set up in a weir structure system than just a blanket outfall, because the canals would basically go dry and as this river went down, even through the tides, those canals would, would dry up, and then there wouldn't be water for irrigation, there wouldn't be other, so it's imperative that we maintain those.
Right. And so the city is, and again, does the city use best management practices when we're dealing with these issues?
Yes. So our best management practices, actually, we were evaluated by DEP for our compliance with the NPDS permit, our National Pollution Elimination Discharge Systems, which evaluates our application of chemicals, our storm drain cleaning, all of those elements. And there's several elements in there. The DEP came down and evaluated us. In fact, we were actually contacted by other municipalities because DEP talked about how well we were doing.
Okay. And that's all of the things we're doing? We're not just going out and spraying weeds?
No, we currently do mechanical cleaning in some of the backyard ditches, and we do mechanical mowing and where we can and where it's accessible, accessible, but there's some times that the chemicals are required and needed.
Why are there some areas behind, next to some of the seawalls that have grasses and trees and stuff growing up on them?
So my understanding in talking with staff, I think in 2013, I know the vice mayor will know, the residents came out and the, and the city decided to cut back on spraying. And the direction, from what I heard from staff, was a lot of those canals along the seawall have dirt embankments in front of them. So the direction was to spray only the waters, to keep the water open to that dirt bank. And in doing that, we've had a lot of volunteer vegetation come up with cabbage palm trees and a Brazilian pepper, and it's starting to encroach into the canals.
And those, those areas are supposed to be clear as well per our permit?
Correct.
So we're going to have to get that material out of there.
Yes, and I have been meeting with contractors. I have another meeting tomorrow. I met with one last week, last Friday, as a matter of fact. We rode the entire canal from Joy Haven up to the end to have them give me a cost on what it's going to take to manually cut all that vegetation back and get it back. Not spray it, not chop it off and leave it in the canal, but cut it, take it over, take it out of the system, grind it, and get it out of the way, and open them up.
And the contractor that we have spraying uses, provides us with MSDS sheets and is required to use best management practices as well through the, through his applications.
Correct.
What is the total amount of concentrated group Roundup that's been sprayed by the city contractor in our, in all of our lakes and canals over the last year?
Last year, it was 26 gallons of concentrate.
26 gallons, okay. So that's over the entirety of all of our lakes and canals?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So Roundup is a systemic herbicide, is that not correct?
That's correct.
So Roundup is, is taken from, it's sprayed onto the plant and absorbed into the plant, and then it goes down into the roots and kills the plant?
That's correct.
Roundup binds up in the soil, right?
Correct.
All right, and then breaks down? So...
So my understanding is there's, there's bacteria and aminos that break down the gallop fate when, when it binds into the soil.
Okay, so I believe every single thing that I've heard from the citizens here today, well, almost everything. There's, there may be something that was a little bit off-kilter, but I believe almost every single thing that I heard from the citizenry here today. But I don't agree with everything that I heard from the citizenry today. And simply from a fact that, and we have a responsibility as a city to provide for the quality of life and safety of our citizens, and to do that in as economical a way as we possibly can. So for anyone to simply say, you know, if you knowingly went out and did something, that would be genocide, well, certainly it would, but I would never recommend knowingly going out and doing something. The city has been very, very proactive in reducing the amount of pesticides that we've been spraying. We've got a bunch of people out there with weed eaters going around through ditches, cleaning out ditches, as opposed to just going through and randomly spraying them. So I'm very pleased with all of that. And I would say this too, that I do not for a second buy the toxicity of Roundup. I don't buy that for one second. We've heard in the past, you know, the WHO said it's a probable carcinogen, and sure they did, they also said red meat was. And, and they've rated to the toxicity of processed meat as more toxic than Roundup, you know? And if you use different toxic methodologies, salt is more toxic, table salt. And there are, there are many, many other things that are more toxic, and that is, is relevant to this conversation that we're having, because Roundup is a very small piece of the best management practices that we're using out there to maintain the waterways that we have, that we have to maintain. We have to maintain them. And it's a very small piece of it, but I'm comfortable that it's a very safe piece of it. Now, if we never had to spray it, I'd be, be more comfortable with that too. Of course, I don't want more chemicals, but I'm very comfortable with what I've seen through all of the studies, from European studies, from studies by the Environmental Protection Agency. The Fish and Wildlife have resumed spraying. We've heard that many countries, I think there was a statement made at the last meeting that we're the only country in the, in the world that lets you spray Roundup, which is completely untrue. There may be one or two countries that have actual bans. Do you, are you aware of any?
There were five, and of the five, I think there were two or three that have resumed spraying, like Sri Lanka, I think they've released it, and then, I don't know the exact number, but I think it was around five or six. I don't have the exact number.
And, and the discussion isn't that, well, it's not harmful, so let's just keep doing it. The discussion needs to be that, it needs to be a part of the best management practices we utilize in order to maintain these canals. It's an integral part, but it's not the only part, and it's not the biggest part. How, what, I heard, I heard a statistic one time, is there like lettuce or something like that, that doubles in size every seven weeks?
So water, when talking with our applicator, I was asking him what would happen if we stopped spraying?
Right.
And part of what the FWC did, and he was telling us that water lettuce and water hyacinths double its volume every seven days.
Seven days?
Every seven days.
Right. So when, so when we're, when our contractor is spraying these waterways, what's the process that he's using?
So they target the mower, they knock just weeds and vegetation back to the water edge. They don't do blanket sprays, they spot spray to try to eliminate that growth.
So if he sees a piece of grass coming up or a piece of that lettuce, he just sprays it and moves on?
Correct.
So it's just a little spot, top spray, and he goes through, what, monthly?
Once a month.
Once a month. He goes through, he covers them all once a month. Again, counsel, I would just tell you, I mean, I would assume that the city manager has provided you with the same information that he provided me with, that I asked him to look for, so that, so that we could have as much information as, as possible. I, for one, am very proud of the city of Sebastian and our environmental record, because we have one of the strongest environmental records on the, on the Treasure Coast, and that, that is a fact. We were the first to come out with a, with a irrigation mandate that only allowed for irrigating lawns twice, twice a week. We were the ones that started that. We were the ones that put in nutrient scrubbing baffle boxes along our river. We're the ones that require new development to maintain and hold all of their stormwater. We're the ones who are assisting our riverfront developments in getting off septic, which is seriously causing problems in our river, and onto the sewer system. So we have a strong record. And, and anyone wants to stand up here and impugn my record or this city's record on the environment, you're, you're barking up the wrong tree. And we are not some fool, little podunk Sebastian that can be fooled into believing some of the things that we've been told. So the fact of the matter is, the city of Sebastian has been actively engaged for decades in making sure that we do everything we can to improve the environment for our citizens, our riverways, the Indian River Lagoon, and the children of this community, because I have several children, and a mother, and a brother, and a sister, and aunts, and nieces, and nephews that live in this community, and there's nothing I would ever do to harm a single one of them. Does anyone from council have any thing to say?
Okay, now that we've heard all, all of the, all of the, the sides of the argument, I, I don't think in making this, in requesting that we make this an agenda item, I never intended to say that, that I felt like we should discontinue using Roundup. I haven't said that. What I do believe is there's adequate public interest in the system and in what we're doing, that I believe that it is important to the citizens of the city that we respond to that. And I'm still asking, and what I would like to see is a definition of the options. I don't care whether those options include spraying Roundup or not. A definition of the options, I would like to have public discussion. I think it's important for us to have that discussion. There is adequate, I'm, I'm receiving adequate response from the citizens of the city that it warrants that we do that. This is an open communication issue. This, to me, is, a government can be like we have at our federal government level. They can hide behind buildings and make decisions, and we all moan about them, or the government can be forward and upfront and come out of the closet and make decisions. And I think this is an issue in which, whatever direction we choose to take, and I, I don't disagree with anything you... with anything you said, and I understand that you have a, you have a very solid background in this. And I've seen much, much evidence that Roundup is safe, you know? And so when I read all of the evidence on both sides of this, all I'm saying is that we need to bring this out in the open. We need to quit having the conversations come at us from the back door, and we need to bring it out in the open, and we need to make a decision based on the information that we have. And then, at that time, then we can say to our citizens, we've brought this forward, we've opened it up, we've talked about it, we decided in the open, and we decided it based on the evidence that was presented to us. I don't, in any way, shape, or form, want to predetermine what the solution is. That's the worst thing you can do, is predetermine a solution and state your problem to that solution. That's not good engineering, it's not good management, and it's certainly not good government as we can all see when we watch CNN, Fox News, and all the other purveyors of that stuff. Okay? So my intent in this whole issue was to bring it out in the open and for us to produce the document that we can then go forward with talking about, and we can bring it to the residents, and we can make the decision based on that. So I stand behind that. I don't disagree with anything I've heard from anybody tonight, with the exception of the fact that we're trying to perpetrate genocide. I made my comment earlier about that. I don't appreciate nor want to hear anybody say that anybody in these five chairs up here is trying to poison anybody. We're not. We're not the only city. There's 50 states in this country, and these products are used in every state, on every farm, and in every yard. It's not just in this city that they're used, okay? So I still stand firm that I believe we should, we should do the report, we should bring it in the open, and we should make a decision. It's open government, and open government is very important.
I would agree. And I would ask, does the city have, currently have a plan for maintaining the waterways?
We do, and currently our plan is, where we can, we do mechanical, we do chemical removal. But we're also moving forward and looking at other options. So we didn't take these comments and just say, look, we're going to do what we've always done. I'm not that type of manager. I've never been that type of a person. I'll look at all the options. I don't prejudge it. I've been meeting with contractors. I've been chasing contractors down to get them to come to the city to give us prices. I've got a meeting on Thursday with another one to ride the canal. So I appreciate the council bringing this up because it gives us an opportunity to let the citizens know that we as staff aren't just saying, look, this is the way we've done it, we're always going to do it, we're going to maintain doing it that way. That may not be the best option.
But it's important to know that that has been an ongoing process.
Oh, I don't disagree with that.
That the ongoing process has always been best management practices, trying to provide the most efficient and effective way to keep those waterways clean and keep the people of this community safe. And making adjustments to that process as we've gone forward, and we've done those things. And I'm not arguing with you, Mr. Dodd. I don't, I don't have a problem with your, with what you're doing. I believe you should do this. I believe and wish there could be an actual open dialogue. I wish that were possible, but I don't think it is. So what I think you're asking for is, city manager, go forth, come up and bring us your plan and other options for your plan.
Yeah, I want to see options, I want to see options that are predicated on the problem, not on the solution that you've predetermined. And I'm not accusing you of predetermining solutions, okay?
I understand.
I want to see the problem that says, here, the problem is we have to remove, we have to maintain these canals. Maintain these canals means we remove vegetation. Here are the five ways we can remove vegetation. Here's the pros and the cons of those five ways. Here's the cost. If we do mechanical harvesting, we may have to spray anyway.
Of course.
All right, I don't know the answer to that. I'm asking you to provide that answer.
Yeah, I'm working on that.
And I'm saying that, I understand. I'm not trying to defend whether the city has done a good job. I don't question whether the city's done a good job. I'm saying that we can defend our past practices, or we can communicate to people so that the people understand that we are doing the best job. So I'm just asking for the communication. I know you're doing what you're doing. You and I have talked about this. I know that you're talking to contractors. We've, you know, and I understand these things are taking place. We just haven't communicated that very well. The way to communicate that is provide a document to the city council, let us then deal with the politics. I agree with you. If we look at the fringes of this, I can't imagine anybody on this planet having a valid discussion about climate change because of all the polarity in the discussions. Nobody wants to talk about what happens with climate change because nobody wants to admit who's wrong responsible for it. I think we should admit that God did it, and let's just figure out a way to fix it, you know? The same thing here. Let's communicate that. Put the document together, let us talk about it. Let people come up and tell us they like or don't like or whatever, which is going to happen. We'll spend, you know, let's allocate some time. Let's understand we're going to spend two hours in heavy conversations about it, and then we pick an option. And we then, that option then is what we carry forward with. I don't know what that option is. I could probably prejudge it, but why would I want to do that? Because that's the worst thing you can do from an engineering and a mechanical and a management perspective, is to prejudge it. Just come up, come up with the options. I'm going to make a motion that the city manager provide the city council with a document that outlines the options for removing the vegetation from the canal system as part of our maintenance responsibility, and provide that to the city council with pros and cons and cost estimates.
And I would suggest that that's just basically saying, what are we doing?
Well, I don't want to know what we're doing.
And I'm on board with that, 100%. I'll second that.
Can we hold that motion for a second? Because Vice Mayor hasn't gotten to speak, and neither have I.
Okay.
All right.
Are you withdrawing your motion?
Yeah, I'll withdraw my motion for that.
Mr. Evino.
I mean, I think, I only think that's fair. Linda, it looks like she's got a bunch to say. I have a bunch to say. So Vice Mayor, if you want to go ahead, I can wait.
I have some things that I'd like to say, yes, but I don't have a problem with the city manager coming back with the plan on how to clear the vegetation in the canals. That's, that's a good plan.
Of course.
But there are other products that we can use to clear that vegetation that do not contain glyphosate. There are 800 lawsuits pending. They can all be wrong. They cannot all be wrong. There are other environmental projects, products that we can use. That's what I'm saying. So that's why I would like to see that in his proposal as well.
Well, that's what I meant when I said options. That's why I said, don't give me what you're currently doing. Give me the options to what can be done.
I have seen Applied Aquatics spray over the last 30 years when I worked for the city. And they have a very large turnaround of sprayers. So what one person is supposed to do may not be what the next person is doing because they're not, they're taking that turnover around real quick.
So we're already starting with the problem being Roundup?
No.
And so if we're going to the city manager and saying the problem is Roundup, start, find something else, then we're completely off of what Mr. Dodd was asking for.
No, no. What I'm, what I'm saying is provide us the options. Go to Applied Aquatics, go to the sprayers. What options do you have besides using something with glyphosate in it? And just ask the question, what options are there available to us? I don't want to prejudge that. I don't think you and I are talking about anything different here.
There are other products.
What are the options available? And from those options, then we can go forward.
Mr. Evino.
Ms. Carlyle, I have a quick question for you. Actually, this might even be directed towards the mayor, because I'm not privy to a large background in herbicides or pesticides. Roundup commercially and Roundup sprayed at the home are two different products, correct?
The same basic, there's a whole bunch of different versions of Roundup. Based on, in the commercial versions, there are some, there's a higher concentration in some, and so you mix it. When you buy it at the store, typically what you're buying is in a spray bottle. It's already diluted down to its user, end-user form. When it's, when you're buying it, for commercial uses, it's a more concentrated, so that you have an applicator who will then mix in whatever the Roundup, so the, I'm sorry, whatever the water or surfactants or whatever other pesticides they would be using at that time for the application.
So theoretically speaking, if we were to just say, no more Roundup spraying in the city, my neighbor who lives next door to me on a canal bank could say, I'm buying a big 50-gallon jug of this from Home Depot, or 5-gallon jug, or take five, take a bunch of 5-gallon jugs, put them in a 20-gallon jug, and just spray the crap out of his whole yard and everything, and there would be nothing that I could do.
Yeah, I mean, really, Councilmember Evino, we're talking about completely separate things here. So Roundup for home use is not labeled for use in, I would say, most Roundup that's used in the home. It's not labeled for use in aquatics. So it's used for spraying beds around the home for, you know, killing the weeds in their flower beds and stuff like that.
I'm just looking at it like, if I live on a canal bank and I'm using it for home use, there's still a potential for that to actually get into the canals.
Of course.
That is a potential, right?
Of course.
Okay. So I'm going to say this. I clearly understand the people's concern about this product. I actually have a, I am an RN. I actually have a degree in medicine, if you will. I'm not an MD, but I do have a fairly good background with medicine. I have taken care of patients with Hodgkin's and non-Hodgkin's lymphoma. There are several different things that actually are listed as the top causes of non-Hodgkin's lymphoma. The lyphocyte is one of them, they said, according to several studies that I've read so far, said maybe contributory, but some of the ones that they actually list that are top ones are HIV, H. pylori bacteria, age-related, over the age of 60, things like that. So I'm not saying that it does or it doesn't, but in any, in any form of leadership and management, as what I think the council brings, this council specifically at this time, brings a wealth of knowledge and in different areas of strengths and weaknesses, it's always smart to implement, as one of the other ladies in the audience said, best practices. And part of best practices is educating yourself and making good, informed decisions. Some of the comments and things that I've heard up here tonight, one of them specifically is egregious. I did not get into medicine or the healthcare field or law enforcement to ever hurt anybody maliciously and/or otherwise from my own ignorance. I got into it because I wanted to help people, and it's part of the reason why I'm sitting here. I think Mr. Dodd brings up a great point about educating ourselves, finding out what all our choices are. And frankly, anybody that's been in management or in leadership knows that that is part of best practices. So I'm completely on board with looking at all our options and finding out where we need to go from there, and making a good, informed decision, not based on social media and internet bias, because that's exactly what it is. Another gentleman got up earlier and commented about this case, and if you read some of the other comments from, or either from both sides of it, you read this lawsuit that just happened in California. One of the lawyers even comments about, well, they didn't let us present all the information, so they only got part of the information and not all of it. And then, just sitting here on my phone and pulling up random stuff about glyco, glyphosate?
Glyphosate.
Glyphosate, thank you, excuse me. The World Health Organization, agency's determination, and I'm reading this right from the internet from the Wall Street Journal article, I can even give you the link. And I'm just making a point here. I'm not saying one's right or wrong or indifferent, but it even says, "The Environmental Protection Agency convened its own panel to review glyphosate. The scientists conducted a comprehensive systematic review of studies submitted to the agency and available in open literature. The EPA's Director of the Office of Pesticide Program, Richard Keywing, wrote last year, 'They concluded glyphosate is not likely to be carcinogenic in humans.'" That's one person's study, that's one person's opinion, but it is the World Health Organization. So it's like Councilmember Dodd said, it's on either side. We would be foolish to just automatically jump to conclusions on one side and not look at both sides of it, and then make an educated, informed decision. So I'm pro, if you want to, Ed, you want to remake that motion, I'm in support of that and looking at it from all angles, and then having an open discussion, talking with the public and what have you. I mean, I'm on board with it.
Okay. I re-proposed my discussion. Do you need more than that?
Don't ask me to repeat it. Are you okay? Do you want me to repeat it?
Do you like the document?
Yes.
If you want to. Are not sure the vegetation is broken or not, and what I would probably say is...
Linda, are you okay with that?
That's fine.
All right, that's my motion. Is your mic on?
The second was Mayor Hill.
Yeah, I'll still second that.
You'll still second it?
Sure.
Okay. Roll call?
Roll call.
Okay. Mayor Hill?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember Evino?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Nothing tonight, sir.
Mr. Carlyle?
Just briefly, since our last meeting when I was up in Tallahassee, it looks like we may get some support for our septic-to-sewer program. We'll see how that goes. Senator Mayfield's going to try to carry the ball and get us some funds. Again, it's a long way before the budget reconciliation is done, but hopefully we'll get some funds to help convert that, and I know we're also applying for some other grants, but...
All right, thank you. Can we keep the chatter down back there? We're still running a meeting. Thank you.
But that was it. And then we also had great conversations with other representatives and senators to help support those projects and to also help stem the cause of, or the call to take away our home rule or our ability to self-regulate. And so we're continually fighting that battle. It seems to get more egregious every year, so we just have to keep an eye on that.
So it was a fruitful visit?
It was very.
Excellent, thank you very much. Anything else?
Sorry?
Nothing else for me?
That's it.
All right, thank you. Ms. Williams? All right, then, thank you. Councilmember Evino?
Mr. Carlyle, do you know why we started the sewer-to-septic program? And I'm not trying to push you on the spot.
So, well, you know, the biggest reason is, is because of the Indian River Lagoon and trying to take the nutrient loads off of that Indian River Lagoon. We know we have septic tanks that are failing. The county had gotten funds through their own utility funds and state appropriations to put the infrastructure in. And so the goal of this city was, is to help, whatever we can, to reduce the nutrient loads and the, and the things that are entering our waterways.
And you spent how much time recently up in Tallahassee, speaking to Senator Mayfield, driving up there, going up there, hours and hours and hours lobbying for grants and what have you? I'm just making a point here, with the mayor said earlier, that, you know, we are. And I haven't been on, I've been on council, actually, it'll be two years in November, and we are responsible, we are doing the right thing by the people here. We make good, smart, informed decisions. And I can't stress that enough to the people watching and the people in the audience, we do do that. We're just not going to make off-the-cuff decisions. And actually, I'm proud to be part of this. I really am. That was part of the reason why I ran for council, because I wanted to see us do things like this. And I have not seen anything, since I've been on council, as long as I've been in council, I have not seen us make any rash decisions on anything that we've done, including hiring Mr. Stokes and hiring Mr. Carlyle, which I think, and guys, I'm just saying this, I think you guys are doing an amazing job, and I appreciate what you do and the feedback that we get. So that's all I have to say.
Is that all?
I told you I wasn't going to be quiet, but you know what? I just couldn't hold my tongue.
You just got some passion in you.
I do, you know? I really do, and I had to get another, a third bottle or second bottle of water tonight.
I can't follow that, so I will defer to our wonderful